Good evening, everyone. I have six o'clock, so I am going to call this city council meeting to order. Will everybody please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love that. I think that's the first time everybody was up on their feet before I got it out of my mouth. Let's do roll call, and I'll start with you, Councilman Owen.
Present.
Thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilwoman Burns?
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Allen?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, everyone. So, we're going to move into approval of the agenda. I do want to make note that we are pulling off a new business, item one. So, when the approval happens, please make mention of that, whoever makes the motion. And then also adding to the discussion, if you will, is a discussion of the fire levy and also the fire radios. So, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, pulling item number one and adding a discussion of the firefighter levy and radios.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Perfect, thank you. So, I have a motion by Councilman Burns, pulling item number one under new business, adding discussion of fire levy and fire radios, and seconded by Councilman McGoffin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, items one through three. Do I have a motion?
I'm mayor. I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. All right, so tonight we do have a presentation, and I believe that Chief Wagner is going to make those introductions. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know that we've talked about a lot of these different things over the last few months between the Public Safety Committee and the council as far as the levy lid lift and adding some personnel and hopefully getting this on the ballot at the end of the year. One of the things that we've kind of held off for before we get the motion to put this before a first and second read, which we're hoping to get tonight, was the talks of the community paramedicine program that we were looking to, at your pleasure, to see if you wanted to add that to the levy. And there were some questions brought up here a few weeks ago in regards to that program, and we thought we'd bring in the expert on this. It's kind of the forefather of Skagit County's Community Paramedic Program. He's our first one that we have in the valley, and he's been doing it for a couple of years over here at Anacortes. Steve Monrad, who started up at Concrete and Arrow Skagit over 30 years ago, has been a paramedic firefighter at Anacortes for 25-plus years, has been running this program over here pretty successfully, and has a presentation for you, a lot of questions and answers, kind of brought up this program from its inception here and is doing a lot of good things and has a lot of your answers that you asked questions to this last time that I really don't, and he has the knowledge and the success stories to go with it. So, with that, Steve Monrad?
All right, thanks, Chief. All right, thanks, Mayor, council, audience, chief. Thank you. I'm going to have to look over my shoulder every now and then because I don't remember exactly what's on the slides. I put together a real quick kind of PowerPoint with some of the facts and figures and statistics that I have. So, if you see me peeking over my shoulders to look at the screen. As Chief Wagner says, I'm Steve Monrad. I'm the community paramedic from Anacortes Fire Department. I began up, I grew up upriver. I'm from Concrete, been with Anacortes for 25 years now, and started this program back in 2021. So, if we can go to the next slide, and you can go ahead and toggle through the different things here. So, this program started in 2021 as an 18-month pilot program with the goals to basically improve health and safety and reduce call volume for unnecessary and non-emergent 911 calls. And really doing that by referring people to more appropriate resources than a fire engine and a medic unit. Next slide.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I have a, it's actually showing up on my.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to take this and put this in front of you?
Probably be less awkward than me.
And then that way you can see what you're looking at, and you don't have to keep looking over your shoulder.
All right. Yeah, that's quite helpful. Okay. If I had brought my glasses. So, one of the big reasons, you know, you're probably wondering is why we did it. Well, back in 2021, in the first three months of 2021, we had 10 individuals who created 11.3% of our call volume in Anacortes. That's all of the 911 calls the Fire Department had. 10 individuals created that, you know, pretty big portion of our calls. Two individuals each called 911 nearly 30 times each in that short period of time. So, there was a few people creating a big portion of our call volume. Next slide. So, what is community paramedicine or otherwise called mobile integrated healthcare? It's a model of healthcare using patient-centered, and that's an important phrase there, patient-centered, mobile resources in an out-of-hospital setting. So, it's bringing what the patient needs to them where they are. Okay? Utilizes the skills and training of a paramedic or EMT, working with community partners as an integrated component of the local healthcare, social health, and behavioral health system. And the key is identifying the particular needs of a patient and bringing them right where they are, what they need. Okay, next slide. All right, next slide. So, one of the big things that makes a community paramedicine program successful is having good, strong partnerships within the community. And this is a list of just some of the many that we partner with. We have a big partnership with Island Health. They actually help to fund part of our program. We also, I work very closely with the Anacortes Family Center, which is a nonprofit organization that provides housing for women and families, as well as other case management and other resources to people in the community. Work closely with the Police Department, do stuff with the Senior Center, work with Northwest Regional Council, North Sound ACH, and on and on and on. And there's probably some on those that should be on the list that aren't. Just, the partnerships is what makes the program work and working with different organizations, all striving to help people get what they need where they are. So, what is it that I do? Well, there's a few things that I do. One of them is patient home visits. And when I go visit somebody, I can do an assessment of the safety of their home, especially for fall prevention. I can do medication reconciliation. I can go through all their meds, make sure they're taking the right ones at the right time, and they have all of their meds. I can do follow-ups for the hospital or for the clinic. If they have a patient that they're concerned about at home, I can go put eyes on them in their own home environment. I can do exams for patients and wellness checks in their home. One of the big things I do is refer to other services, whether that's home health services, try to establish caregivers. Sometimes it's help people find different housing options, drug or alcohol treatment, behavioral health treatment, whatever it is they might need where they are, we try to bring it to them. And probably one of the biggest, most important things that I do, and probably the thing that makes the most difference, is just being there as a support and an advocate. And sometimes it's really, frankly, just showing up and being there for someone and having that trusted person that they can call if they have a question. When I go meet somebody, they get my card, they get my cellphone number, my work cellphone number, and it's a number that they can call if they have a question or if they have a concern. And sometimes I get calls from people just because they wanted to talk to a friend, and it's nice to be able to bring that to them. Other things we do, community outreach, work along with the Anacortes Family Center, Anacortes Police Department. We have a community outreach team that we're working with the homeless population in the community. We had some good successes with helping to navigate people to better housing situations, substance use treatment, and other resources. Just this last year, we wrote a grant with AWC for an alternative response team. In fact, today I was working on renewing that grant. We got a six-month grant to start an alternative response team that includes a resource navigator, social worker, as well as a master's level substance use disorder, behavioral health specialist. So, we created this team. We had to do it really quick because it was a short grant cycle. But in six months, we've had some good successes, helped some people get into treatment that wanted to go to treatment. We've helped some people get into housing that wanted better housing, and I'm really hopeful that we can be successful with the grant, continue it on. So, next slide. Other things I do, public education, public outreach, get to do fall prevention and other teaching activities, or I guess not teaching, but I work with the Senior Center. I get to go and work with their wellness committee, and they have some really great programs that I get to be part of. Also with the schools, got to help out with a really neat program with the Nick of Time Foundation, doing cardiac screenings for student athletes. Got to be part of that, which was just a great opportunity. And then I get to come visit service clubs and a lot of times I feel like I'm a good, I end up being the PR wing in the Fire Department. So, that's, I think, a benefit as well. Next slide. So, I'm going to just tell you a little bit about how I learned about people, how they come to me, and how many people I've worked with. This is, I have a lot of different spreadsheets and things that I've been working with and trying to develop as we go, but this just basically shows the patients I'm working with right now. The active ones are the ones that, right now, that's my active caseload of 25 people that I'm working with. Some of those people I might see multiple times a week. Some of them I might see once or twice, and then they graduate because we figure out a better solution for them, move them on to a different situation, or, you know, their needs are met. Inactive people are people who have graduated, some have passed away, but they no longer are needing my services. And the watch list are people that I'm just keeping an eye on. So, next. So, 83 people have been enrolled since July of '21. And you'll see here, this is the, kind of the breakdown of how I receive referrals, and it's been interesting to see how this has evolved over time. It started out, most of the people were high utilizers. There were people that identified that were frequent callers, and I was calling somebody a high utilizer if they called more than three times in 30 days. Well, I figured out really quickly that that was a pretty, pretty low bar, and I had to raise that a little bit. Since then, our crews at Anacortes have gotten really good about referring people to me before they get to that stage. For one, they want to not have to run on frequent callers, and also they're recognizing that there's truly some benefit to getting help for these folks before they get to the point that they become frequent callers. Also receive some from family members. Outreach is from our outreach team, people that I enroll, that I encounter through outreach. The hospital, I receive referrals from the emergency department, from care management, so people who have been hospitalized, and from the primary care clinics within Island Hospital. Public, that's just somebody that, you know, a neighbor or concerned citizen calls me about somebody. That's where I get those referrals, and you can see I've had a few people have referred themselves. And I also, just for figuring out where our problems lie, I assign everybody at least one problem category, and you'll see what those are: aging, disabled, complex medical, mental health, fall risk, substance abuse, and homeless. You notice those numbers don't add up to that 83. That's because everybody fits into at least one category. Some people might tick every box, but everybody fits into at least one. And these numbers didn't really surprise me, knowing the demographic of Anacortes. We do have, you know, a large population of elderly, and they have medical issues and they fall down. So, it wasn't a big surprise for me. Some of the benefits that our department has found with having a community paramedic program, of course, is just improved customer service and patient care. To have somebody who's able to bring the patient what they need where they are has been a great benefit for our patients. Enhanced capacity and the fact that our crews, we aren't going to have to go out to visit these people with a fire engine and a medic unit. And while I'm on duty, I'm also another set of hands that can respond if I'm available, so able to put another person on scene, and that's been helpful. Public relations, I get all kinds of comments from people, "Oh, it's so nice that the Fire Department does this," whatever it might be, even just coming out to check on somebody. People really like it. The opportunities to network, like the opportunity to network with Mayor Johnson at the North Star Project and other things like that. It's an opportunity to work with people I never would have had the opportunity to. And then, of course, the big one is call reduction. Next slide. I don't expect you to be able to see that, but basically that is a matrix of all the patients that I worked with in 2022. So, click the mouse there. And so, in 2022, out of all the people who I worked with, they had 201 calls prior to their enrollment in the program. And after working with them, in that group of people, their calls reduced to 96 calls after working with them. So, that was a 52% reduction in the 911 calls of the people in that group. And that's been consistent since we started this. In the first, or the last six months of '21, when we started the program, it was right around a 50% reduction in calls. Some people, you know, once we got started with them, their calls just dropped off completely. And others, you know, do have complex needs, and they're going to probably need to continue calling 911. But if we can, if we can slow that down, if we can, again, stop the need for a fire engine and a medic unit to respond for things that they don't need, that's a good thing. Okay, next slide. So, a quick case study, and then I'll quit blabbing and let you ask any questions that you might have. So, this was actually one of the, I guess you could say, a poster child of our program. This was a lady in her 60s with a very complex medical history. She would fall frequently and had frequent complaints that would cause her to call 911. Prior to getting involved with her, she had 73 911 calls. 39 of those were in six months. So, there was a while there she was calling daily, sometimes multiple times daily. She was one of the first people that was enrolled, and some of the work I did with her was multiple referrals to Northwest Regional Council for case management, multiple adult protective services referrals and investigations for self-neglect and caregiver neglect, and she actually ended up for a short time in an assisted living. But after, there we go, after we got her enrolled, her calls dropped to 37. So, from 73 to 37, a considerable drop. Next slide. Hope you can see that, but a little visual depiction of the first two columns there are January through June. So, that was actually before we even started the program. So, you can see the blue bars are calls and the gray bars transports. You can see the steady decline over the time that I worked with her, to where she even got to where she had no calls. And this year to date, I think she's had four calls total. But, so going from 73 calls to four calls, that's a considerable saving of resources and saving of money, too. So, there's lots of stories like that and lots of cases that I could go on about, but that was just a quick one, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, are there any questions for Steve? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you very much for coming out with that presentation, and I do appreciate that, Chief Wagner, you supporting that and getting that information to us. I was wondering about faith-based partnerships. I know that with us, one of the things that brought this about was there's about 150 people in our community that have over five-plus calls a year, and there's 40 that have over 40-plus calls a year. So, it equates to about 24% of the calls, which is probably a million-two in the budget. I haven't seen the exact figures to bring that out, but we're looking at an increase, and we're getting requests for increases in the Fire Department. So, on that, are you partnering up with any groups and then training them or vetting them to be able to support that, to reduce those calls farther than down to 37 or down 50%? And do you have capacity to do more than, like, 83 is probably like 38 a year to date if it's 2021 July?
Yeah.
So, would that be something that would be able to increase that capacity?
You're actually really close. Year-to-date, I'm at 26. So, that's, I think that my capacity right now, I think 25, to have an active caseload of about 25 is about the maximum. And just so it turns out, I was at a class a couple of weeks ago when I was speaking with the community paramedics from Bellingham, and that is actually by policy. That's their max caseload is 25. So, I guess there was good reason why that felt like that was about the most. Some people, like I say, you're able to graduate them pretty quick, depending on their needs. Some folks, it's a long-term relationship.
So, what about partnership with other groups? We actually had a small discussion of having even a pamphlet with the resource groups that are within the community that a caseworker would be able to hand out and say, "Oh, you need railing, or you need this. Here's some groups." And even taking some time to vet and train those groups to be responders. I know there's a group around Cedar Woolley that loved to do the search and rescue and paramedics and assisted first aid, and they would love to be a part of something like that. Do you partner?
Yes, I actually do, and I flew through that list pretty quick. But one of them actually is the Rotary Clubs in Anacortes. The Fidalgo Island Rotary Club has a community service committee, and they, just as you say, they love to do things like build ramps and rails and help people declutter their houses and clear junk, and they, I have their contact info to refer folks to if I have somebody in need. I have churches that I'm in contact with who, you know, both ways we help each other out with patients. But as for training other people to help, I haven't gotten to that point yet. But that's something that I think definitely a program should consider and look into. I guess, a comment I should have made right off the bat, too, is that, one of the things I learned right away in starting this program and was told by everybody that I visited to research is that you don't just open up the book and A to Z, how to start your community paramedic program, because the key word is community, and it really depends what your community needs and the resources your community have. If you have organizations like that that are chomping at the bit to help out, by all means, I would tap any of those resources that you have.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for sharing your experience that you're having at Anacortes and your wisdom.
Yeah, and, you know, down the road, if this is something that you decide to move forward with, I would love to be part of helping you.
Yes, go ahead. Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and coming out here. I just have a couple of questions for you. One of them is, of your caseload, how many of them do you feel fit, like, exactly within the scope of a community paramedic versus someone that could be from, like, a different department or agency that should be picking up those cases?
There are a lot of the, there are a lot of the people I work, that I'm working with that are under the care of other agencies and other providers, but that isn't enough. A lot of, I'm sure that Cedar Woolley is the same thing. Anacortes has a general shortage of caregivers. If you need a paid caregiver, get in line. So, a lot of times, folks are having a hard time getting enough caregiver hours. They're just, there aren't caregivers available. There are folks that are, you know, case managed through other agencies that, again, that case management just isn't enough, and, you know, it just takes a village. There was one gentleman that I was working with that we actually had, there were three of us on-site with him at one time, trying to stabilize his needs after, you know, a life crisis, and that's just what it took. We all had to work together to help this gentleman, keep him, you know, keep him out of trouble, keep him out of the hospital, keep him, you know, safe. But as for my caseload that requires my skills as a paramedic, to be honest, a few. There's few of them that really require a paramedic. They don't require my ALS skills and certification, but the one thing that I, what I'm able to bring to it is 25 years of experience of working with people in their environments, in their homes, and the ability to, and the knowledge to speak with doctors and nurses and care providers. And so, that's, I think, something that, you know, that brings.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
I am wondering about the level of severity. So, are you working only with those individuals who are calling 911, or are you also working with individuals who are, say, homeless? So, I know we have an organization, Helping Hands Food Bank. They're actually reaching out to a lot of the homeless. Would that be wrapped into this as well, or could it be wrapped into this as well?
Absolutely.
So, they have the resource, they can share resources?
Yes, absolutely. I work really closely with the Anacortes Family Center.
Okay.
In fact, I mentioned the grant that we were awarded last year. The contracted social worker and counselor that we have are contracted through the Anacortes Family Center. So, you know, it's bringing in those resources and their skills, and, but yes, we're out doing outreach with folks in the community and bringing, you know, resources they might need, as well as bringing community action or Helping Hands or whoever else we might be able to bring in. Definitely not trying to keep any work in a silo because I can't do it all. I don't want to.
And then one last question. Are you an army of one, or did you start out? Are you an army of one, or did you start out as an army of one?
Yeah, I am a team of one.
Okay.
And again, the grant helped us to expand that, to add the resource navigator who's half-time. My vision of ideally what this program would be, would be to have some sort of case manager, social worker, working along with me.
Okay.
That would be my vision of that. But again, it's what your community needs and what your community has available for resources.
Okay.
And, you know, partnerships are really where it's at, and whether that's with a nonprofit or other city departments or a private enterprise, that this is, that's how these programs work well, is with partnerships.
Okay. All right. Yes, go ahead. How's your position funded?
Funded through the fire department. And I, we receive half of my position's funding through Island Hospital.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was back in twenty-one, when I wrote the proposal for this. The timing was just really good because Island Hospital was concerned about hospital readmissions, emergency department readmissions. I wrote this proposal, they liked it and wanted to be part of it. And when we started this in twenty-one, it's back still when COVID was kind of disrupting things, well, the hospital really needed some help operating their COVID testing tent. So I was willing to help out, so that's what I did for six months. And as a result, that helped us to forge a really good relationship with the hospital. And with that, what's really helped out is I have access to their EMR system, to their electronic medical records, which has just created, just made things so much easier to be able to, I can communicate directly with providers of patients that I'm working with and vice versa. So that was more than what you asked, but.
No, I think that that's great to see the partnership on a financial level from a local hospital as well that you're partnering with, because you're pulling people, you're getting referrals from various entities, not just from the nine-one-one calls.
Yes.
And so I was also just wondering, as a paramedic or if part of the EMS system, if you were getting any funds from the six-year levy?
No, only what the department receives.
Okay.
We aren't receiving any additional funding for this. One other funding source that isn't really a, I guess we don't really bank on it, it's a sort of bonus, but did get secure funding for last year from the North Sound ACH, North Sound Accountable Community of Health. So between that and what we were able to secure from the hospital, I nearly funded my position last year.
Okay.
The city didn't have to pay much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, just had one more question for you.
I like the questions.
Okay, thank you. So one of the concerns that came up previously on the council, we were discussing this, was, you know, on like substance abuse, maybe some homeless or other like home visits, do you ever feel going in solo that, you know, maybe I should have a second person with me on this?
I would say most of the time on the home visits, no. And that's, I think a lot of it with the clientele that I'm working with. Again, mostly for the home visits are older folks that, but I don't feel any concern there, but I have taken people with me with dealing with some behavioral health patients, just out of, just out of an abundance of caution. I haven't really been in any situation that I felt, you know, my safety's in jeopardy. I think part of that comes with, you know, having a lot of experience and maybe a good spicy sense that, you know, I feel pretty comfortable. But there have been occasions where I have brought people along, and that's the really nice thing about having a half-time resource navigator. You know, she's able to come with me and it's another set of eyes and another set of ears.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was a great presentation.
Thanks for having me. I'll bring you your.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
See ya. So then later in the new business, we will be actually addressing that under the fire levy, so. Okay, thank you. Then moving on to the city administrator report. Lost my place here on the page. Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and council. Couple items tonight, one's a bit late-breaking, and I want to start with that, and we're not going to ask you for anything, we just want to give a quick briefing on the Rita and State crosswalk. I'm going to turn that over to Mark, and then we'll come back to the Blake briefing, which will be Nikki Thompson, our city attorney.
So some time back, there was from the council a request to look at some enhancements to the crosswalk at Rita and State Street. And there's a picture up on the screen now that shows that intersection. We basically have bed ramps and a marked crosswalk on the east side of the intersection, as you see it there now. The one enhancement, it's relatively low cost, that would make this intersection safer for the crossing of that by pedestrians, would be to add two rectangular rotating flashing beacons, they're called. These are the same ones you see at Highway Nine Township and John Leiner and McGargle and the one on Fruitdale near Portobello. And we used to have a set of those for the Ford operation when that was here on Ferry Street. So these would be double-sided ones, so they flash and are visible from both directions. We estimate a cost for a pair of those at twenty thousand dollars. Relatively simple to install, our crew does that. They're solar-powered. They have a lifespan of ten-plus years, should be more than that even. Basically just batteries to keep up occasionally and replace them. So that's basically the fix that we see for that particular problem, that we can recommend. It's a fairly low-cost fix. Anything beyond that would involve some kind of pedestrian refuge or bull belts, things like that, quite expensive. And as you know, we just replaced the ramp at the library side of this, and the one on the south side's relatively new as well. So we weren't really looking forward to doing anything more aggressive than this, but this actually should pretty well solve the problem of making it, the pedestrians crossing the intersection more visible to the motorists on State Street. This particular location, because there's a curve here, does complicate things for the drivers trying to keep their attention where it needs to be. And we do have a bit of a speeding problem through this intersection as in most places in town, so. And that's my report. Any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Were you wanting to discuss funding regarding this?
Yeah, we could certainly do that. So I was just going to add that we don't have this budgeted for this year, this work. And the cost, as Mark mentioned, is about twenty thousand dollars. We would recommend the council strategic reserve as an option, and I can turn it over to Kelly to talk about that a little bit.
That pretty much sums it up, that we could use the strategic reserve. We would just have to add it in a subsequent budget amendment, move the money from the strategic reserve to the street fund, and I assume spend the money out of the street fund.
Okay. So quick question, how long will it take to get the light once it's purchased?
You know, I'm assuming there, I don't know exactly, but most of these things like this are fairly long lead time now, probably two to three months to get something like this.
Okay. And then implementing it, putting it in?
We can put it in within a few days.
Excellent, okay. Questions?
Over there at the library, it's, because that's where that is, right? And you get the food pavilion, there seems to be a pretty healthy amount of traffic over there. And I'm sure you've done some studies on how much foot traffic is projected to be over there?
Well, I don't have any studies on foot traffic. The average daily volume of traffic is just slightly under ten thousand vehicles a day. That's pretty heavy. It's about half of what it is on SR twenty in that same stretch east-west.
And do we anticipate more use on Minkler and Jamison as time moves forward in that area?
All of our roads are growing one to two percent a year. I haven't gotten the traffic counts for this year yet, and I'm expecting those, and I do expect to see a fairly good bump. We did last year. Actually, with COVID, our traffic counts went down for a couple of years. They went down, and we just recovered to previous, COVID previous levels early part of last year, but it's definitely trending upward.
And then one last question for Kelly. Do you know when the last time we used the strategic fund from the council? I know it's been in there for a while and I don't remember.
The only expenditure for the last couple of years has been additional fifty thousand dollar payment on the city, the debt for building City Hall and maybe a couple other smaller expenditures, ten thousand dollars to maybe the YMCA. And then in the budget amendment, that's on the agenda, having a inter-fund loan be paid off through the strategic, but there's enough money in that fund to cover all of those aspects.
And then we stopped funding that strategic fund according to the last budget cycle, correct?
We cut down the funding in that fund, and then the amendment that is on the agenda today completely removes the water utility tax that was going into that fund.
Okay. And so at this point, there's no plan to replace it or to grow that fund? It just doesn't get used enough?
Yeah, right now, money has just been sitting in that fund, building up, so there's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund, a little less, I think. We would reduce it by three hundred thousand to pay off an inter-fund loan and continue to make the fifty thousand dollar loan payments for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and then reconsider, reconsider the use of those funds.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Kelly or for Mark or Charlie? So what's the council's pleasure? Do you want to make a motion to pull the, what are you looking at, twenty thousand?
I would be in favor of making a motion to pull that for that crosslight. We don't use that fund right now, it'd be nice to find some projects for it, and this would be a good spot for that.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion moving forward with that.
Thank you, Councilman Lavaca. Do we have a, okay, all right. So for the light, let's see here, let me make sure I can make this call right. So for the crossing there at, on State Street, for the library, it would be twenty thousand dollars. A motion was made by Councilman Lavaca to pull it out of the council strategic fund. It was seconded by Councilman Allen. Is there any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Excellent, so that'll be nice to have that light there. Yeah. All right, back to you.
So Nikki Thompson, our city attorney's got a quick briefing on the new Blake legislation that you may have read about in the newspaper in just the last week. Nikki?
Thank you, Charlie, and good evening. Last week, the legislature held a very short special session to address the Blake fix. And they did, in fact, pass legislation that created a two-tiered gross misdemeanor system for possession or use of hard drugs. The first offense would be a gross misdemeanor with a maximum of a hundred and eighty days in jail and a thousand dollar fine. The second offense would be a gross misdemeanor with a maximum of three hundred and sixty-four days in jail and a thousand dollar fine. This prohibits knowing possession or use. And it also created a diversion program and encourages law enforcement to divert or encourage treatment as opposed to criminal charges. We had intended this evening to bring you our own version of a drug ordinance consistent with conversations that we had with other Skagit County cities. However, we have been preempted at this point by the legislature. So next meeting, we will be bringing forward an ordinance that adds back in RCW sixty-nine fifty-four zero one-three, which contains the criminal elements that we just talked about. In essence, that's all we need to do at this point. We can have further conversations when the need arises about these treatment programs, which are unfunded, unfunded, and so we don't really think that they are going to be utilized in the way the legislature thinks they will be. And we can talk about that when the time comes. So we'll be bringing forward an ordinance next meeting, and we will be looking for action at that time, because the new drug laws do go into effect on July first.
Okay. Any questions for Nikki? So I did send it out to everybody, I don't know if you all received it, but I did send it out from, when I received it from the legislature, so it should be in your email, so you can look that up and read it. And I did have conversation also with Representative Eslick, and she and I had actually quite a conversation about it, I actually shared it with Nikki and with Charlie. So it's a fix. It's not a good fix, but it's a good start, and probably it's something that we're going to be chipping away at for the next few years. So anyway, any input you have on that, any message you would like us to take back to the legislatures, we'd be happy to do that.
I was hoping to get that RCW one more time from you. I got most of it written down, I wanted to confirm I got it all.
Sure, so the RCW that contains the misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor penalties is RCW sixty-nine fifty-four zero one-three, and that's where it criminalizes the use of hard drugs.
Okay, and that's the one that we're going to be looking into, re-implementing?
So we're going to bring that back in. Our code does not have that already adopted by reference, because we put our code in place after the Blake decision, which invalidated that section. So now that they've amended it to be consistent with that decision, we need to put it back into the code. We already have all of the other codes that have been amended by this Senate Bill fifty-five thirty-six in place. We just need to put four zero one-three back in.
And if you were to take anything back, it was, I got a lot of feedback, and I fully agree with it, too, that it's absurd to make drug use legal in any city, and I'm glad that we are challenging, taking that head-on and not just letting it pass us by to become something, so, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Councilman Burns?
My message to them would be, don't create a requirement for treatment offer if you're not going to pay for it. They should really be funding that.
Welcome to our world.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes?
Yeah, I would just also echo both Councilman Lavaca and Councilman Burns in that we need to ensure that the policies that are being put in place are strict and they are hard. Without that, we are enabling and encouraging the use in our city and the trickle-down effect that happens to this, and the unintended consequences of the knee-jerk reactions are what we are then left with here to deal with on the city level, and it's not fair to our citizens and our taxpayers to clean it up. And so that's what I would like to see.
I'll be happy to take that back to our legislatures for you. Yes, yes, Councilman. Okay. Anyone else? All right. So that is an update. Anything else, Charlie? Nothing. Okay, moving on to the council then, and I will start with you, Councilman Owen. Do you have a report tonight?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to let everyone know that Farmer's Market is back, three to seven on Wednesdays. Be sure to check it out. I also received quite a few comments to my email and phone calls regarding the planning director, so I do appreciate the staff taking some more consideration on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Thank you. I, too, received a few comments regarding the community planning director, and I also appreciate that being further reviewed and discussed on the city's end here as well. I'd also like everybody to know here that we did have a strategic planning meeting earlier today. Prior to this, we discussed the calendar for the coming year, the balance of this year and moving into two thousand twenty-four. Currently looking at and discussing the possibility of allowing council assignments to be one year instead of two, something to think about there, as well as creating an approval process before items are brought to council. So those are a couple of items and topics that were discussed and will be further discussed moving forward. and will be further discussed moving forward and possibly brought to council with some changes there. I've also been asked to let people know that Friday Night Lights will start this Friday at the rodeo grounds if you're interested in watching and supporting barrel racing in town. Also, our Cedar Woolley High School fast pitch softball team won districts on Friday. They're advancing to state, and they're asking for a woolly community welcome send-off tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. So if anybody's interested in seeing your state's fast pitch softball girls head out, 8:00 a.m. meeting in your Cubs gear on Third Street, they would love to see you there.
Very good, thank you. All right, Councilman Burns?
I too received a few comments about the information technology director, so appreciate the direction you've decided to go, Madam Mayor. And Cedar Woolley Lager Rodeo, make sure you get your applications in by June 24th. You can find them on their website. That'll be a spectacular event. I was really happy to see all the turnout last year and look forward to this year.
Excellent, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. If you're looking for a way to honor those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, you are all welcome to help the Legion set out flags tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. at Union Cemetery and again at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday morning to pick them back up.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Nothing now, Madam Mayor. She stole my thunder on Union Cemetery.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a finance committee meeting that we were going to have, and that got canceled. I'd like to get with you and probably through email, I was waiting for you to respond, Kelly, to see when that was going to go back on the books or if that was something that was still on the calendar. So I don't have nothing to report on the finance committee meeting. However, with the city planner, I have had a lot of input from citizens, from business people, from people wanting to put ADUs out or develop a wedding venue over on Fruitendale that want somebody that they can work with, that somebody that they're going to enjoy. And they were surprised at what was being put forth. So I would refer back to the core values that we passed last session. And that's not only for working within the office of the city workers, but it's also in relationship with the community altogether and all of those people being able to have input on choosing the right people that'll work with them in this community for planning all throughout. Because planning, any director's an incredible position, but especially planning. So I would just venture to say that. Thank you for pulling it from the item. And I would be very interested to see how many people do apply and what those applications look like. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I only have a couple of things. You heard Councilwoman Kestie talk about flags out at Union Cemetery. The American Legion is going to be putting on a ceremony, as they do every year, at 11:00 a.m. at Union Cemetery on Monday. Encourage everybody to go out for that and to really honor those who have given all. And the second thing is that I would like to bring up once again, the, actually on the last page or near the last page, it is the city and council leaders' learning session. This is going to be a joint city council meeting with all the council individuals and mayors and the commissioners and the health department. And it's going to be quite a, I think it's going to be a grand opportunity for everybody to get your questions answered regarding North Star. What exactly are we doing? How far have we moved along? What are our priorities? And you have a chance to actually ask questions. And so it would be advantageous to really attend if you can at all do that. It is going to be June 13th. It's a Tuesday night, so it's a couple of weeks away. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it's at McIntyre Hall. And like I said, the flyer is in the back of your packet, and there is a number there, an email there where you can actually RSVP. And so far, Councilman Burns is the only one who has RSVP'd. So, and I can tell you from the other councils, quite a few of the other council members from the other cities are attending. So we don't want them to show us up. So, yes. It's an official council meeting with all of us. Yeah, yep, we can all go. Thank you, that's a good question. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, yes.
Missed one point, if you don't mind. Sorry, we also had a planning and business development committee meeting yesterday where we discussed a draft economic development action plan. We had a good conversation with Monique, Councilman Lavaca, and Madam Mayor. We also decided to have a extra meeting on the 21st of June so that we can go over the grant program and see if we can help align it with the council's wishes from the last meeting we discussed it.
Perfect, thank you, yeah. Okay, moving on now to public comment. It is 6:54. I'm going to open up public comment. Please come forward to the mic. Make sure the blue light is lit when you talk, so you can be heard. State your name and your address, and try to keep it to three minutes if at all possible.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. My name's Paul Woodmansey. I'm the owner of BYK Construction. Our BYK office is 702 Metcalf Street here real close in Cedar Woolley. I just wrote a letter about the planning director open position that I just want to read for you and just give for public record. "To the city council of Cedar Woolley, I'm here tonight to address the planning director open position. As a community, we have a great opportunity to hire a new lead for our community planning and building design throughout our city with John Coleman leaving for the city of Anacortes. This position is an incredibly important role to play throughout our city as far as commercial and residential planning and development and business development. These positions do not open up very often, and when they are open, taking the time and finding the right fit for your city is critical to the city's success for the next 20 years or more. This candidate must be able to reach across the aisle to create relationships based off trust and commitment to benefiting their communities. This candidate must be able to be open to all development within the city. This candidate must be community mindful, protecting the community by enforcing the code, but they also must be a teammate to the business community at the same time. The mayor and the staff in Cedar Woolley has been exactly that teammate and protector. My experience here since 2014 is just that, a culture of teamwork. However, it only takes one person to create a new attitude or to create a new agenda that dismantles that team culture. In 2016 and through 2017, my brother Tim and I decided to stop developing in the city of Mount Vernon and move our business, BYK Construction, here to the city of Cedar Woolley. The exact reason was because the culture in Mount Vernon was one of uncooperating, demanding, road-blocking our business to the detriment of the community itself. This culture was created by the mayor and some of the planning staff of that city. It's not a culture that I wish to move forward towards again. Thank you."
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment?
John Janicki, and I'm on 711 Metcalf Street. Just a comment on being careful to pick the next planning director. I was fortunate to be on an interviewing committee 35 years ago for a planning committee, the planner here in Cedar Woolley. And the resume looked good, but it was not a good fit ultimately. Wonderful person, individual person. I've been dealing with planners all the way up and down from Federal Way in Seattle. Margaret Fleek in Burlington was fantastic. She helped up in Hamilton. So I find that most planning directors, most of them are not very creative, and they have some vision or whatever, and it's not necessarily what the can-do attitude of Cedar Woolley is. So I echo Paul there that it's almost like you really want an attitude more than the technical requirements, because we can work through those things. So I would hope that you bring some people on to challenge the candidates on creativity, because we have some real challenges. We don't want to ruin our city. We don't want to make it ugly. We don't want to do things that are not right for the citizens of Cedar Woolley. But we need to improve in a lot of ways, and I think there's a lot of creativity things that we can do. So I really appreciate you guys taking a second look at this. And then I would suggest reaching out to members in the community, not just pro-development people. You can bring in everybody, but the people that, so that we can do some amazing things in the city. And the planner can make a big difference on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make comment?
Good evening. My name's Allen Henderson. I live at 842 Ferry Street, just right down the road. I just wanted to say with the city ordinance change on the gross demeanor of hard drugs, I didn't catch the RCW either. But I applaud you guys on adding that. I work for the city of Burlington. They're trying to do that, too. And drugs and homelessness is a major problem in the city. I work for Public Works, pick up needles every day. I used to work in the parks, and the troubling part was I picked up a lot more needles in the parks than I did now around our buildings and our grounds and everything. One thing I, when you ask the council, and it wasn't my turn to speak, obviously, if there's something that they wanted you to take to legislation, I think one thing that everybody around the city might want to echo is gross demeanor, that's just not quite enough. I think our laws on drug use need to be much more strict. Drug use is the leading cause of homelessness, and homelessness is the largest issue that we're facing right now in our county. It's costing us a lot of money. We are getting grant funding for it, but there's no end in sight. So yeah, please just feel free to let our legislators know that they really missed the mark on this. And come July 1st, when the drug laws change, we're all left holding the bag. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, anyone online? Okay, seeing none, it is 7:01, and I am going to close public comment. We are going to move right into the new business and fire levy is what we're going to be addressing. So Chief Wagner, is that you who's going to address this? Or is this you, Charlie? Or is it Nikki? I don't know that I got the memo on that. Who's going to be addressing this? And we're going to be looking at clarification based upon the letter that you have in front of you that you received from Skylar Anderson. We're going to be talking about clarification on either four or eight paramedics added to the levy, talking about community paramedics. Should we add that in there for the funding for that? And then also radios for the fire department. So with that, who's taking this?
You summed it up well. I think we'll probably pass it around a little bit. But yeah, where we are is we are getting short on time. If we're going to put the fire levy on the ballot, we have to do it by August. So, you know, coming up on our first meeting in June, and our recommendation is that we come back to you with a first read on June 14th and then come back with something for a second read and potential action, second meeting in June. So we need good, clear direction from the council on where you want to go with levy. We've talked about the community paramedicine program. So key question is, do we want to include that in the levy or not? And then you've given us direction previously that you wanted to look at four firefighters. There was a letter that came in from the fire union asking about eight. So we were just wanting to know if four is still the number. And then there was also the issue of radios, and we can kind of talk about that as a backup to this. But the radios are included in the current levy, in the four and the numbers that we've shown you and the eight. So there's a request from Councilwoman Kestie to potentially use ARPA funds for that and wanted to just get clarity from the council if you want to keep it in the levy or possibly use it for, you know, use a different funding source on radios or continue to apply for grants. So a number of policy items kind of tied together. I think to make it as simple as possible, just probably start with the community paramedicine program. Do we want to include that in the levy or not at this point? And Frank, I don't know if you've got anything else to add at this point.
Could I just, I have, I want one clarification here. So if they choose to put the, go for the radios in the levy, couldn't there be an assurance that if the levy, God forbid, does not pass, that that money would be there for those radios to be purchased?
Certainly, we could set money aside or hold money in ARPA. That would probably be the easiest place because they're about $300,000, what we're looking at. But yeah, that is a backup plan and definitely is one that we could bake into our ARPA plan to make sure the money's there.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right. Councilwoman McGoffin, do you want to start with you? I'll just go down the line here. Do you have a question?
I just want to first agree with Councilwoman Kestie. I think the radios are a one-time purchase versus staffing is, you know, year after year. So I would be supportive of that as well, Charlie, to include that from ARPA funds. And then for the community paramedicine, you know, I personally think four is about the max that we could ask the community at this time. I think eight is just, it's going to be really hard to pass and get the support for that as much as I think we need it. I think four is probably the max we could ask. And so with that consideration, I think looking at community paramedicine would really help us with our numbers based off the presentation tonight and just kind of what you've shown us, Frank. I think it'd be a good program to decrease those high-call volume people. And I really hope that we can get the four additional firefighters, too.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
I would, in regards to radios, I would actually agree with Councilwoman Kestie that we use ARPA funds, one-time funds, rather than include it in the levy. That way, we can ensure that the fire department gets that taken care of. They are one-time funds to be used, and we need to use them. And I'd like to see them used to ensure that we've got the proper communications in place to take care of our citizens, should they have the need to call 911. In regards to four versus eight, I mean, at the end of the day, if you're talking about the community paramedic, I'd rather see eight firefighters than a community paramedic because the hard reality of all of that is you're still not taking care of the blackouts that you're getting up at the other stations and covering other shifts. I mean, we need to take care of the basics first before we take care of adding the additional community paramedic. I'm not opposed to the community paramedic. I think it's great, and I think it can help to divert some of those additional calls and some community members that have the need for those resources. However, I do think it is absolutely a hard sell to the taxpayers. So I'm not opposed to eight on the basis of we are taking care of our community and needing to cover our staffing, and our staffing is first and foremost when we're talking about taking care of our community and first responding situations when they're in need. But the problem with it is it's going to have to be written very clearly, and there's going to have to be a lot of door knocking. And people are going to have to fully explain to people when they see this percentage increase, because that increase is noted on the ballot, and that ballot has to be explained. And most taxpayers don't understand how it's broken down by household. So when they see a 46.17% increase, the likelihood of getting that passed in the environment that we are in is going to be very rough.
And just to clarify, it's not that. I hear what you're saying. You're saying-
Correct, it's of that, you know, but that's just, the language is going to have to be in, and people are going to have to go out and really sell it. On the flip side, we really need to dive into business economics because that's where that funding actually comes from. And without the business, with the continued development and homes and people coming in here with no revenue being generated enough to support the staff that we need here in the city to function, we're stuck in another catch-22. We've got more complexes that are planned to move forward. Prior to, I think, just about everybody on this council. All of this was approved prior to us being up here. But the fact of the matter is, is the situations were created. A can was kicked down the road by somebody, somewhere, somehow, but we can't keep pointing blame. We have to look at the fix. We have to try to solve the problem, make sure our community is taken care of, and move forward with it because we can't go back and change what is in place, the contracts that were signed and the things that are going to be done. We do owe it to our citizens to take care of them. And so, I mean, I'm not opposed to the eight to ensure that we have proper staffing, the increased calls keep going up. But I just really feel like eight's going to be a super hard sell to the taxpayers. You know, and I'd really, again, encourage that on the flip side of that, that there is a volunteer application on the back, so you can try to- that there is a volunteer application on the back so you can try to recruit into some volunteers coming in and stuff again because that's where we've took care of a lot of things and the volunteer numbers are down significantly. But if we're explaining to the community as to why we need more people, you know, we can also say, hey, if, you know, you have an opportunity to volunteer and be a part of this as well. So you've got two options.
And it sounds like you're leaning either way.
They have, at the end of the day, the taxpayers are the ones that are going to vote for this. And so I, I personally, just gut feeling and talking with some constituents, I don't think that you're going to get eight. I don't, I don't think that they're going to vote for that. But they are held in kind of a hostage situation, right? Like at the end of the day, they don't want to vote against public safety because what if something happens? But at the same point, they don't want to, you know, that's additional money going out that they are really struggling right now with inflation, the way it is, with the outlook of the financial forecast right now. And just globally is scary to a lot of people. And to ask them to increase so significantly becomes very difficult.
Okay.
So I've just, just taking a pulse on the community as a whole, I think it's, eight is going to be a very hard sell. Four's going to be hard, but eight's going to be a hard sell, although eight is really where we should be to try to take care of our community and avoid the blackout situations that we're currently establishing and having.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Diamond. Councilman Burns?
Could I get a clarification on the radio costs? Is that 30,000 or 300? 300, okay. I, too, would be partial to just buying the radios and not including them in the request. The way I look at this is, we've got our firefighters requesting that we ask the people for eight additional firefighters. They're the ones who have to deal with the consequences of this vote. We're passing this on to the people so that they can make their choice. I don't disagree that this is a very, very hard sell. And they're going to have to get out there and work hard to convince people of why this is needed, explaining how taxes are collected and that they're not doing a full-on 46% increase in the property taxes for a home. But at the end of the day, we aren't the ones who are going to be out there, short-staffed, responding to calls, trying to make it to the next call. We might be the person who has a heart attack, has an accident, and doesn't have somebody to respond or has to wait for somebody to come from Burlington because our people are tied up. I know there's plenty of things that add to that, drugs, other issues, people who are just calling and meet a friend. And I think that the community paramedic program sounds great. But if I had the choice between five, having the community paramedic doing four, or doing eight, it sounds like the firefighters have made it pretty clear that they want eight. It's up to them and I guess us, if we'd like, to go talk to the community and let them know the reasons why the firefighters need eight in order for them to do a good job. I don't disagree that business development is a huge part of it. I've been beating that drum since I got on the council that we need to work on business development in the community, helping to make it so people don't have to leave town to go shopping on their weekends. So the tax dollars stay here and that will help us with revenue in the long term. But that's not something we're going to turn around in a year or two. And realistically, four is kind of a Band-Aid. And I don't see us getting things turned around in time for that four to do the trick. And I see us going back in maybe three or four years and asking the community for another increase, at which point they're going to say, hey, didn't we just say yes to police and yes to fire? Why do you keep coming back to us asking for more and more and more? We need to be cautious about how much we ask for, but at the same time, ask for what you need. Explain why you need it and let the people make their choice. In the end, we're all going to live with the consequences of it. But, you know, looking at this letter, seeing the, the 19% decrease from 84 to 18 in volunteer firefighters nationwide, I completely agree that we should be seeking out volunteers. But it looks like we're just going to have to face the fact that we need to pay people to be firefighters. It's got a lot more technical, a lot more difficult. There's a lot more training. It's not like when I was a kid, my neighbor was a volunteer firefighter. I don't think he had a bit of training outside of going down to the station once a month, learn how to operate the equipment so he could hang on to the hose and not get blown away by it. He didn't have medical training. He didn't do anything else to go do that. It was just a community service. But now there's, there's so much more expected of our firefighters that I don't think we can expect that people are going to increasingly do it for free. I appreciate the ones that do out of the goodness of their heart. There are some fantastic people who volunteer for us. It's a great way for young people to start getting involved in the program, to get a good job, get a good career path. But realistically, we have to look at what it's going to take over the next five years, 10 years to keep that department working and functioning properly. And it sounds like eight is what's necessary. I dislike the number, but it is what it is.
Okay. I have you down for eight. Then what about community paramedics or paramedicine?
Well, community, community paramedicine, if the council was settling on the four, then I would lean towards doing that instead, at least add the fifth one so that they get a little bit of reprieve from those extra calls. But with eight, we're already asking for quite a lot. I feel like getting it over 50% would really make it even harder.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
I'm looking forward to seeing the numbers with minus the 300,000. That'll look a lot better. But I still think it's going to be a, a very hard sell for eight. And I don't want us to be turned down. So I'm very torn because I completely hear what councilmember McGoffin and Diamond are saying. And I do believe that we can get our volunteer program up and going if we start promoting it more. I think it's kind of been put on the back burner. And I heard some really good ideas from you, Lovaka. And it is up to the taxpayers. They will have to say yay or nay for the eight. I just think it's going to be a really, really hard sell. So I'm very torn on this. But I am 100% about the 300,000 going in from the ARPA funds.
And community paramedicine, what's your thoughts on that?
I think it's a, it's a worthy cause. I think right now, I, I wouldn't add it. I'd be more for the firefighters than I would for that right now, the extra firefighters.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Madam Mayor, I'm with everyone else. The taxpayers have got to okay it. I don't think they'll go for eight. I think it's what you need and what you want situation. And it's going to be a tough sale. I, I like the idea of maybe the
The community, is it the community?
Community guy, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But a community person, but I don't think we should be adding on at this point.
Okay.
It just seems like, well, let's just kick in a little bit more all the time. And at this time, maybe one of the firefighters that comes on could be put in that position.
All right.
And if they could reduce the load, there'd be three extra firefighters. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilman Lovaka?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I'm concerned with the overall costs. And I would be inclined to do the community paramedic because I want to, I want to look at if 150 people out of the Sejri Wali residents are taking up 25% of the funding and our solution is to add more funding, it doesn't make sense. We have to address that. We have to address abuse to the system. And without being able to educate people or leave some sort of informative packets or bring some sort of community support, since most of them are elderly, we're going to only build on that and bring more people in that feel it's okay to call more. And so I, I really feel like getting somebody, maybe it's a volunteer or a paramedic. But with that, having a volunteer group around that individual that wants to support in doing that, not just calling on groups, but actually developing a core within that, not be an army of one. But that has to be addressed. I mean, seeing 40 calls a year by a single individual, 40 times by 40 people, 150 people with five calls over. I mean, that's lack of education. It's lack of understanding what it's costing everybody. And we've got to do something. The other thing is the selling of the program. Last session we had a month ago, this came up. And I was trying to get the actual cost per month for that. And it was $18. And that's, that's not bad. I look at $18, I'm like, okay, and this is what I'm getting for that $18 and it does make sense. But it took a lot to get that information out. And I think that that's a challenge because what we try and do is run through way too many numbers. And we try and to figure out the big thing and, and the high percentages versus saying, hey, it's going to be about $18 a month to increase this. And that's per household on average. If you have a higher house, it'll be a little more. Lower house, it'll be a little less. That's going to be a lot more palatable and understandable. Our volunteer program, it should grow and that's, that's plain as day. COVID hurt us and there's no denying that. Having everybody take vaccines and then only to find out they didn't work, it was a flip of a dime. Maybe they would have worked good and that would have been something where it paid off. But the fact that it didn't, it caused a lot of volunteer firefighters and firefighters to step out of the whole entire state and the nation, as we see. And they never even got an apology for any of that. Right now, we found out that the shots did not prevent spread, nor did it stop infection from the firefighters. But I saw Vice President of Firefighters Association crying onstage in Mount Vernon, begging the people, begging us to do something for them, to help them. And, and we didn't. We weren't able to. We didn't know, maybe. But that's why we saw a big reduction. And if we can earn back that trust somehow, I think that would help with our community because we are a staple for volunteer firefighters. And as you pointed out, throughout the entire county, we've got the biggest supply. We, we help so many people and young groups grow into volunteer firefighters and understand the need. And we can, we can really hone in on that. So I would, I find that eight is a big stretch. I find four is possible with the, with the staff and then with that additional support to help educate, to bring those costs down. But I think four, from my conversation, I have a lot of them, that's a hard press with everything that's going on, too. Unless we can break it down, $18 a month, couple of cups of coffee, guys, and we can just stick to some simple points and bring out those, those stands or things like that to encourage people to watch that stuff. So that's, that's where I stand on those two items.
Very good. Thank you. One quick question. I didn't, maybe I missed it. Radios for the fire department. What's your thoughts on that?
I'm not sure where that came from to even get into here. Are we all of a sudden needing $300,000 of radios? And so that just came pretty, I know that we kind of talked about that a little bit here and there, but.
I can speak to that a little bit, Councilman Lovaka. We've been operating with radios that are over 15 plus years old, actually 16 this month. We put in for grants. In the middle, the beginning of ARPA, there was a bunch of funds available and it was brought up to use funds to, to upgrade our, our radios at that time. We were in the middle of a cooperative grant at that time with District 10, District 16, Clear Lake, District Eight, for a regionalized grant for almost a million dollars at that time. $300,000, or $270,000 of that was ours. And we were in the hopes that we were going to get this, these funds. We got denied. We resubmitted, got a new quote. That same set of radios went up $30,000 to $296,000 at that time. Still in hopes we were going to get the, the grant funding for that, got denied a second time. So we, we're on, you know, going on 16 years of the, the same radios. And a lot of those same radios have since been inoperable and broken and, and we're missing them. So it is a true need. And the idea was we would get this grant. We would pay our matching funds of the 10% and then put them in ER and R funding for a replacement cycle then, from that point on. We'd really like to have these radios replaced every eight to 10 years, not 15 or 16, so we wouldn't have the issues or the concerns. The unfortunate part is the radios we bought 16 years ago are not P25 compatible. They're not, they don't meet the, the needs of the system or the requirements of the 911 center going forward with their communications plan. So it is a, a need. We've been limping it along, hoping to get by. And kind of like with the staffing issue, we've been kicking that same can down the road in hopes of getting a better deal and making it more fiscally responsible for us as a one-time purchase. So it is something we're going to have to address no matter what. The police, they were fortunate enough to do it from the beginning and replace theirs when they needed to, two years ago. And so they're now compliant. We just got to catch up to the game.
Well, I, I personally feel the community obviously loves our first responders. That's without a doubt. And I think that the first responders, police and firefighters, EMT, really feel that. And for that to go before the council to be approved, I would be in favor of that being in the ARPA. And I do want the, the whole first responding team to know that, you know, we've seen it from the, you know, not to put the teriyaki spot on the spot, but they, they're a wonderful spot. But when there was that hiccup there, the whole community rounded about it with firefighters, with, with EMT. The community really, really stands behind their first responders here and they love them. So it's one of those things that's on the table with the rest of it. But the radios, I would feel that the community would support your guys' need with the council voting that through on an ARPA.
Thank you. And then going up to you, Councilman Owen, what are your thoughts regarding four or eight paramedics?
Madam Mayor, I kind of agree with the majority of the council. I think we have to be careful what we ask for. This day and time is going to be really tough to pass this thing. And there's, there's got to be some way that we can raise the funds to, to buy those radios without adding, adding it on to the I just don't think, I think people are going to be really uptight when they, they see this thing. And they're, they're, they're living right up to the hill now. They're living from their pocket to the table. And it's a bad time to pass a levy. And, but I know the fire department's in need. And there's got to be some way that we can, we can fund those radios in-house rather than stick it on to the levy. We need to trim that levy down as, as much as we can.
Okay. So you would be for, you'd be for then putting the radios in, pulling that from ARPA? And then what about, what's your thoughts regarding the community paramedicine? Should that be on the levy or not?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your input, Councilman Owen. And I don't know if you're keeping tally over there. Yeah, I don't know if our numbers would match. I actually have only four. It's, it looks like it's four, sticking with the four firefighters. As far as the community paramedicine, I had two that said if it was only four firefighters and they would be in favor of adding it. So that, it makes it four and four. That's what I have, four and four for the community paramedicine. And then for the radios, of course, all of them were for ARPA. So what are your counts?
I just wanted to make a correction to a previous statement I made at the work session when we initially discussed this. And a couple of you have brought it up that on the ordinance and in the ballot, we actually don't need to include the percentage, although that is still very relevant to the conversation. We actually have to include the anticipated dollar amount the levy rate would increase. So right now, our levy rate is, I think, at a dollar 80 per every thousand dollars of value. And that will change no matter what, based on home values and where the levy goes next year. But we have to put in, this is just an example, like 54 cents, the levy rate would increase per thousand dollars in value. That's what we actually have to put in the ordinance and the levy documentation. So it's a dollar value per thousand of your home, if that makes sense.
Yes. Does that change anybody's thoughts?
Well, that seems more consistent with other levies I've seen. And that does make it more, more understandable to the voter, for sure. Trying to break down a percentage and just see the shock and awe. So, thank you. That's, that's going to help a lot.
All right. So I don't know, do you need some clarification as far as the community paramedics, as I have?
I, I had two on my list. I don't know, Kelly, if you had more than that for support, but I, we heard two.
Only two?
Yeah. So that would be a no on community paramedicine, based on what we heard.
Would I be able to ask if, if the council looks at those numbers of those that are taking excessive calls and reconsider your, your vote on that community paramedic, if it's the right fit and they're willing to work with volunteer people from around the community on that? That could be a dramatic- That could be a dramatic decrease on cost to our fire department. Otherwise, we're not addressing those people that are doing repeated calls.
What is the council's thoughts on that response?
My additional concern, though, is while we might be doing some decreasing, we still have blacked out stations, because they still require two to four employees to move on any given call. So if we have multiple calls in multiple areas, and they're dispatched in different directions, we still don't have the staff to take care of our community. And so that's where my, and my concern is when it comes to that. I'm not opposed to community paramedic if we have that stuff taken care of, because that is something that would probably need to be addressed in the future, obviously, especially with the decline in some areas of our community, in mental health and substance abuse and where that all trickles down to. There's no denying any of that. As people are aging and need help, I 100% agree with that. But I think that we need to address the staffing and the blackouts that we're seeing as well. So I'm not, that's where I'm coming from.
If they're responding to the same people that are calling forty times a year, then, and we are able to reduce that amount, that 150 of a 12,000-person community, then they wouldn't be called nearly as much. And that's where I'm kind of coming from. So even if you're able to reduce the calls, 3,600 down 10% at 360, I mean, that's helpful in reducing the amount of firefighters. If two or more needed to respond to 360 calls that are no longer happening, that would be a big change, too. So that's kind of where I'm looking at, if we can reduce that volume. I think we can reduce it more than 10% if we were to apply ourselves and grab additional support.
Right. And the community paramedic, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this person would probably work a standard shift. It's just one person, right? So they'd probably work a day shift. So we still are working and trying to need coverage for nights and weekends.
Yeah, the community paramedic would ultimately, around here, have been working Monday through Fridays, Monday through Thursday, that kind of shift. But I also want to point out that when we started this conversation, we do have some partnerships out there with the ACH and Peace Health to get some of these startup funds and to work with this. So whether you vote on this tonight or not to add to the levy, we're still going to be looking at options to move forward with some kind of a program with this, whether it's a partnership with Peace Health, whether it's a partnership with our neighboring cities around us. We can't let our foot off the gas to, we got to start doing something to help alleviate some of these high, what is it, high-frequency folks that were impacting the system. And not just for us, but for them, because it's what we need to do for the community. And then when we talk about the volunteers, when we looked at the numbers, as we brought to the Public Safety Committee, truly need 16 folks. So there's never going to be a spot in this where we're not going to take the focus off recruiting and bringing in more volunteers. We need those folks, whether you do four or eight. We need 16, and that's just for today's numbers. So we're going to continue to have increases, because as the population grows and development's happening, whether it's here or around the valley, we still have the contract to provide services and EMS all over as the next-up unit, and that's not going to change. So kudos to those 70% of our folks that are still volunteers, that are truly, as I keep saying, they're doing it for a t-shirt and fifteen dollars. They have the backbone, and we need them now more than ever. But we need 16. We're putting the Band-Aid on with four. We are going halfway there with eight. We're going to continue to work on all this, no matter what you decide to deny it, because we have to. It's what's right for us and the community. And the volunteers and the labor group, they know this. They're willing to go out there and work hard on pushing this measure. The big win that I see is what Kelly said, is that percentage. That was a sticker shock to me, too, to put that out there right after the school thing came out with the auditors. That was going to be a hard sell, no matter what, just because of that miscommunication that happened in the valley. And Anna Cordis learned from that. They put a nice ballot measure together. They just passed a person, they had eight firefighters and five police officers, and they did a really good job on selling that to the community, pushing it out there, and how they presented it on that ballot measure. Sold it, kind of like what you were talking about, Councilman Lavaca, with the eighteen dollars or the Netflix payment, or that's the kind of message we got to send of what they're getting for their dollars and not that 46% that's going to scare everybody, including myself.
I just wanted to second that, too. Seeing the 40 versus 20 versus the other numbers, that two-one or two-five per se, I think that does really change the perception when people first see it, because I think a lot of people's first impressions are going to be 40, almost 50%, no way.
And they think that that's of their overall tax dollar. It's really not. You know, if you're paying four thousand dollars in taxes total, that's not the percentage we're looking at increasing. It's just the city portion. So while it's, you know, it makes more sense for, you know, selling that fifteen dollars a month, or eighteen dollars a month, or whatever that's going to be for your house, versus the whole 46% or 24%, whatever it is that you decide on.
I had one question for you. You mentioned that the four is like a Band-Aid. How quickly, before that Band-Aid falls off, that we'd have to come back? Because I'm leaning more towards eight, but, you know.
I think we would probably be in talks immediately. I mean, when we need 16, four is just a, it's just a starting point. And unfortunately, you know, the volunteers, as I say, the backbone, they have made it so we haven't had to act on this for 102 years. They've responded from home. They've missed their Easter dinners. They've missed the Super Bowls. They've come in during the middle of their family dinners and stuff and vacations, and they continue to do so. So we have operated on such a small budget in comparison to our brother and sister cities in the valley, and have enabled us to go this far. And truly, the only dollars we have put out in big increases as far as staffing has been because of the dissolution of Central Skagitmetic One when we took on the paramedic services. So this will be the first time that we're putting a ton of money forward to increase our services, on top of what the volunteers have afforded us. And that resident program and kind of the internship that we've allowed for these folks to come in here and grow has been huge, and we don't want to stop that. But obviously, with where we are at the times and the volunteerism going down, it's harder and harder to draw those folks in. And when we do, it's hard to keep them, because, you know, you can stay here for fifteen dollars and a t-shirt, or you can go down, you know, to all these other agencies that have the openings, and they're starting out eighty-five thousand to 110. And they can still live in this good community and have our great schools and our great streets and our great public works, but drive down there eight days a month and get the career that they have. It's not going to get any easier.
I wouldn't like to change mine, but I also wanted to incorporate what Councilman Lavaca said about the community paramedic. I think we have to try something to help decrease the calls for you guys, too. You know, not just for the people, but also the equipment. And, I mean, this is just an idea. If we're looking at eight, would you rather go eight to nine with the community paramedic, or seven and the eighth being a community paramedic?
I would rather see the eight, because of the way our platoons are. We're doing a four-platoon system, so the eight would afford us to have two people on every shift, and it would make us imbalanced and would make more sense to our program and deployment.
Thank you. I'd like to switch mine to eight.
And actually, Council, what you have decided here with the radios, nobody wants to put that on the levy, so there isn't any money that's going to be pulled out of anybody's taxes for that. And with the community paramedic, the vote stands where you do not want to see that on the ballot. So are there reconsiderations? Are there perhaps, listening to what Chief Wagner has to say, wanting to move more towards an eight than, because it's the only thing that's going to be on the ballot?
You know, I thought we'd kind of, it seemed like everyone wanted four. And I look around the room, Paul, I've got to tell you, Chief, it's not everybody in Cedar Valley makes six figures like everybody in this room. And you've got to keep that in mind, and you've got to go to the taxpayers to get it. We'd all like to spend less on taxes and less on property taxes and less on groceries, but not everybody is in the same pay scale as the people sitting in this room right now. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, I was going to keep mine at four as well, and put that before the people to let them vote on. I know that it seems like, I mean, no matter what, it goes before the people. But it is one of those deals that, right now, this climate, the economy's not doing well. If we were five years ago, the economy was booming, jobs were booming, that would be a great time to do that. And right now, with all the restrictions and all the downturn under what we have going on right now, it's difficult for people. So, but I do want to ask, like, on social media, you've made some very good points tonight in reaching out to them. Have you taken a survey of the social media, just to see, like, what do people feel about four or eight?
We have not started that process yet. We wanted to get through, your pleasure is whether you're going to push this forward. And then as soon as we get our first and second reads going, we're going to, that's the idea, is to start pushing that everywhere.
If you get the, if you get the people in social media saying, yeah, I want to do thirty-six dollars a month on this, because this is a need, and I feel that same way, then I want, you know, listen to the people, for sure. This is going to go before them, and if that's something they feel that would want to be on the ballot. If there's a bunch of backlash, then obviously you'll see where the kind of climate is, at least. So, yeah.
Anyone else?
Kelly, would the amount be thirty-six roughly for the average home? Is that what you'd settle on?
I don't have it calculated, but that's a pretty fair estimate. It might be a little bit less than that. But I am happy to run those numbers with whatever scenarios you would like to see dollar amounts for.
Yeah, I feel like we're looking at the wrong numbers here for what the people are actually going to see when it comes to a ballot measure. And it might be a little more intimidating to us seeing the 47 or the 24 versus thinking about it as, you know, my Netflix and a couple of cups of coffee. I get that it's money that most of us don't have in the community to spend, but there's a lot of other reasons why I would find a great need personally to spend it on the firefighters. So I appreciate hearing those numbers as well. Maybe we can get a better idea of what the people are going to see on their ballot. I know that we keep pushing this out further by doing this, but I'm really worried about putting a Band-Aid on it and then having to go back in a year or two and asking them for more money, or for us to cut a bunch of things from our budget that the city needs in order for us to hire more firefighters, whether we're not doing more parks, selling a park. We can't do things like that to finance another portion of the city. As you've said, other cities in our area have not had the robust volunteer program that we've had. I just don't expect that they're having the same dilemmas, because they're not used to having that volunteer network that we do, or have had in the past. And so that's why Anna Cordis was probably more inclined to pass that levy. But I believe that the community would support the firefighters in this case, if we presented a strong case and then gave the number that they'd actually spend, not a percentage that's going to look scary. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to, so in front of us here, we have 2,024 levy rate. And so for option three, for additional firefighter EMTs, we've got 2.1821 per 1,000 dollars, correct? So we would have our numbers in front of us.
Yeah, so we provided a financial analysis. It doesn't include the impact to a homeowner on the average, the estimated dollar increase. But the first table there is what you've seen at a couple of meetings. Yeah, option three, the levy includes 300,000 dollars in radios, and it would increase the levy 775,000 dollars. And the estimated levy rate would be $2.18. And then the second table there is the new table, removing the 300,000 dollars of the radios. But again, these numbers are over 10 years, so it doesn't drop it 300,000 exactly, but it would be 745,000 dollars, and the levy rate would go to $2.16 or $2.17 per thousand dollars of value.
Right. And so to bump to eight, going to $2.56 is in a far stretch from that. I mean, you're looking at.
Yeah, it depends on what you classify as a far stretch. But yes, it would go to $2.56 per thousand dollars of value on a home.
Right. And so to me, looking at the cost value there, yes, there is a slight increase, but to move to eight and avoid having to do this again in two to four years, because we've got continued growth and no projection on increased business revenue being generated by tax dollars. We don't have any big businesses or industries looking to be coming in to generate that. The reality is, we're going to be right back at this table in two to four years, looking for another four. Is that correct?
Or more.
For another fix.
Or more, depending on how we grow, and where our volunteers go.
So I'm inclined to move towards eight, and the community paramedic being something that is discussed further and funded by grant process and partnerships with the local hospitals in similar way that Anna Cordis has handled.
If I may, that's a great point right there. I didn't notice that. So it goes up to 2.554 if we go to number five, right? Is that what you were thinking, or number six, 10-year plus?
I'm looking at number six, because it's, yeah, it's just a little bit more fiscally responsible.
So that's not 36 dollars a month. That would be more like 26 dollars a month, I believe, or a little less than that. So it doesn't double the actual levy on that side, it seems. And then if we're pushing that, I mean, I love that, Chief Wagner, you've still got goal-oriented to move forward with that reduction of calls by getting some support service regardless of this. And that kind of initiatives, I think, is what's going to bring those call volumes down and help the people that are relying on that system and getting those grants. So that's really good. So number six would be more of a 26 dollar a month, it seems. That would be something that would make sense.
Are you wanting to change your?
Propose that to the taxpayer, and you're putting that forward, then yeah, eight would be something that would make more sense.
Okay.
From a dollar standpoint.
And we heard from Councilman Allen, Councilwoman Kestie, what are your thoughts?
My first thought is, can we be very mindful and stop saying it's a cup of coffee or that it is a Netflix? Because there are people out there who are having trouble buying groceries. So I think that would make them very irritated to hear that. But I would be inclined to go with the rest of the council on eight if that is where they're going.
Okay, that is five. Councilman Owen, what are your thoughts? Are you, I don't know if you were able to hear all that conversation, but are you wanting to stick with four or change your vote to eight?
I kind of go along with the rest of the council. You know, I'm just concerned about this levy, you know, passing. It's a terrible time to run that thing, but I know it's necessary. And I won't be surprised if it's turned down. It's just that people right now are so unstable, and they're wondering where their next meals coming from, some of them. So I'll kind of go along with the council, but I want to see the fire department squared away and be healthy. So I'll go along with the council.
All right. Okay, thank you. So I have six, the eight, one, four, four, and radios out of ARPA, and pulling the community paramedics off the levy. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Can I ask one, just one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm trying to understand how the levy rate increase goes. And so it's at 2.1821 on Level 3, but you double it with eight firefighters for 775, which would be 735 without, or 745 without the radios, to 1435. And so how does the rate not double? How is it going up only 30% or 30 cents, basically? I don't understand that. Like, if you're doubling the firefighters, wouldn't the rate double?
The rate includes, like not all of our property tax goes to the fire, the fire department. So our levy rate is much bigger. Our current levy is like three point two million, something like that. Our current levy is three point two million. So if we increase it by seven hundred and forty-five thousand, plus we also take into consideration valuation, what we anticipate the change in valuation of property to be as well as new construction dollars all go into the calculation. So that's the twenty-four estimated rate with all of those factors.
So that's the total rate we're paying for, for the home levy. It is, it's not the firefighters' increase of that rate. It's the total rate? Is that correct?
So.
Would we be better off saying how much that rate that we're already paying would go up thirty cents or forty cents if we did the firefighters?
So the levy rate is the total rate this, I, I want to also say estimated. We can't know for sure, but estimated rate if we increase the levy by seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Thirty-three, and that's only the city's portion. So other jurisdictions receive money from property tax. That's not included in here, just the city's portion. But that would increase the city's portion of property tax twenty-three point eight percent.
Yeah, it's still funny math to see that we would double the firefighters, double the request and not double the amount that we would be doing the levy. But I do see how that's not the actual amount. I think a column in there or a row in there, I guess, would be for what the firefighters, what, what cents they're asking for in the increase to the existing levy. And it looks like it's about thirty cents and then would go up to like whatever cents after that. But, but thank you for helping me understand that. That's very helpful.
Yeah, so like forty-six percent is if you increased the levy by over a million dollars, like a million and a half, you're almost increasing your total Sedo Woolly levy by fifty percent because our current levy is three point two million. So, but I'm happy to walk through the math. There's a lot of additional small elements that go into that, but I'm happy to walk through if you have any specific questions.
Maybe we can do it at the next meeting, at the finance meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So a huge thanks to the council. Great discussion. Appreciated that. And you've given us direction as how we need to go. We're kind of getting down to a time crunch. We need to get going with that levy. So thank you so much for, for talking through that. So, and I'm, I'm hoping for the best. Okay, moving on to, let's do the unfinished business, which is amending the fiscal year 2023 budget, ordinance number two zero four eight two three. This is the second read, so they will be, Kelly will be looking for action tonight.
So this looks very similar to the last read of this, making some adjustments to the 2023 budget, including adjusting our beginning cash after all of the year-end reporting, moving utility tax, water utility tax from the council strategic reserve into the general fund to fund our, our general government. We also increased our estimates in investment revenue based on what we've seen in the last year from investments and a, like we previously discussed, a transfer in from the council strategic reserve to pay off a loan. And then we've also updated our wages and benefits based on the result of the labor negotiations from January and updated information on benefits and, and other things associated with payroll. The only change we've made since the first read, we increased the general fund revenue by about sixteen thousand based on some grant money the police department has brought in. They plan to use that money for training. So we've also increased the expenditures by that same amount for police training in the general fund.
Any questions for Kelly?
Question, more statement? The strategic reserve for the council, I understand that it hadn't been getting used for the last couple of years. I, I kind of dislike robbing it, but at the same time, I understand you got to get the money from somewhere. So I would like to just say to the council that maybe we should consider things that we can do to help better our community to spend that money on. If there's something that we would like to complete in the next year or two that we think we could do, that might be a, a smart idea before we just have to allocate it off to cover other expenses. But I do appreciate being able to pay the bills. Thank you.
Thank you very much for saying that. I feel the exact same way. I've been looking at that sitting there and it's like we have all these projects that we're committee on or debate on or go through and we can actually do some serious changes relatively quick with very little effort on our part as a council for this community. We should take advantage of that. On here, it looks like our revenue is at thirty-six, three, two, or the revised is at thirty-seven and a half million, but the revised expenditures is at forty and a half million. Are we spending more than we're taking in? And that's basically what's that saying? But.
That's total, total for all the funds. So there are some funds, like the ARPA fund, we have that money set aside. There's, I don't have the exact number, but there's like three, a little less than three million dollars in our ARPA fund. That fund is never getting any more revenue in it. We're only, because we got all the one-time federal money, we're only going to be spending money out of that fund from now on until it's, until it's gone. So for that fund, expenditures are always going to exceed revenues.
That makes sense. Yeah. I remember we balanced the budget, you guys balanced the budget and we had a balanced budget at the last time, so it was, okay.
Yeah, and there's a couple of other funds like that too. We have like some of our impact fees or the real estate excise tax. We get those funds in throughout the year and some years we don't spend all of that that we received and then other years we, we spend that down. So we build it up and spend it down, build it up and spend it down on projects. So that's primarily the reason for this. And I brought out the, the general fund, it's the fund that we kind of have the most discussion about, that we, right now, we're, have a surplus in the general fund for twenty twenty-three.
I, I always look at those negatives, seeing what we're taking in and what we're spending, and if they don't add up, it draws my eye.
Yeah, as it should.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we're looking for a motion?
I would just like to make, to just a quick comment in reserves to, in regards to the strategic funds. I can appreciate the, the wanting to do something fun and finish some projects for the community, but looking forward at the, the fiscal responsibility, I would say that we need to pay our bills first and take care of responsibilities there because, I mean, just like your home finances, I would assume that nobody's going to be going on vacation if they can't pay their water bill, right? And these are taxpayers' dollars that have funneled into this fund. And I think we need to use them wisely and, and eliminate the stresses on the community and the taxpayer as much as possible and cover costs that we can, we can to eliminate that and make sure that the city is, is running appropriately. And then once that stuff is all taken care of and done, if there's excess funds, that's, you know, great. If the city's thriving and we're doing great, then that makes sense. But until the bills are paid and things are covered, I, I think we need to be responsible with that.
So if I may, Dave Ramsey puts out a really good point. And so you got to have your emergency fund set aside and you have to pay your bills off and do it in a snowball effect way if you can, but you have to have a fund fund in that for going out on date nights and making sure that things are working out. So having a budget, a zero balance budget and being able to have money set aside for certain things and allocating that to bills, I believe that's what we'll be doing with some of that funds anyways. But having the ability to take some of that funds and putting it into the city who's, who's put it into this account so much that it wasn't getting spent that they stopped even funding the account. And to utilize that for what the, what the citizens put that in for would be great. Utilizing that for bills too, but also showing them, yeah, you've, you've been funding this for many years. Here, here's a little bit of beautification in the community and, and something more enjoyable around. So part of it, I, I do feel that should be part of the fund, 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 if that's the strategic, if that's what the community intended that fund to be for, which I believe the council strategic fund was.
All right. So is, any more comments or discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty forty-eight dash twenty-three, amending the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll check it.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owen, to approve ordinance twenty forty-eight twenty-three, amending the fiscal year 2023 budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, down to the last item for the night is under new business, item two, which is the Riverfront Park Lawn Mower Agreement with Skagit Fisheries Enhancement Group. And so, thank you, Mark. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Nathan put this memo together and I'm standing in for him tonight. We have a, an existing agreement with Skagit Fisheries Enhancement Group to do improvements to the former FEMA site down north of Riverfront Park and next to the Dog Park. Some of you have probably walked through since they've done their improvements there. Created a pretty nice path there for a walk in, in the park. And this will replace an existing undersized culvert that is a barrier to fish passage in there. And that's the whole reason for what they've been doing is to create additional fish habitat from, for the salmon runs on the Skagit. This agreement will basically memorialize the plan to replace that undersized culvert with a footbridge. It's a forty-one foot long structure, be six foot wide, basically just for pedestrians. That particular park, we have access to both sides of the creek from Riverfront or the river road so that we can do maintenance. So it's not an issue that the bridge is not suitable for passing vehicles. And the reason the culvert was there for so many years is the farmer that is to the west, or excuse me, to the east, used to use that to access a field, but they have an alternative way of doing that now. And so it's not an issue. So we do recommend that you authorize the mayor to sign this agreement so that Skagit Fisheries can proceed with constructing that bridge, just in a way of looking at what they're going to do sometime between June first and June thirtieth, they plan to have this in. We've, we're partnering with this, them on this. We'll actually do the work to remove the existing culvert in the fill and to place the two abutments for them, which will be ecology blocks. And they're going to assemble the bridge inside of our new public works facility. So that's basically what the plan is. They're going to reimburse us for the cost of the excavator rental for the removal of the culvert in the fill and then they'll put it in. And they, they will pay, through the grant they have, they will pay a hundred percent for the materials for the bridge itself. This bridge is going to be a very similar design to what, if you've been out and seen the new bridges that cross the creek up at Northern States, that they were designed by Art Tufti, who's part of the Skagit Trail Builders Group, this one as well. And so it'll look very much like that. It'll have the hog wire on the sides and, and the cedar boards and things like that. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
Okay. Something that I don't know if you caught this as you were reading through the cover page here, but it's actually going to remove invasive species of plants, which is something that has been council goal, has been on the council goals for a number of years. So, so I'm sure there's a lot of them. We'll probably keep working towards that. So if there's no questions, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll put a motion forward to approve the mayor for Riverfront Park Landover Agreement with Skagit Fisheries and the Enchantment Group.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, very good. Passes. Thank you, Mark. Mark brought up the Public Works Building. I just want to remind everybody that the open house is actually happening on the twentieth of June. It's a Tuesday afternoon and it is from one to four. So be sure to mark your calendars. It's a spectacular building if you haven't had a chance to see it, so do come. Both, both buildings are spectacular, actually. I do believe that our water treatment plan is state of the art, which is awesome. Kudos for us, right? Yep. Okay, with that, if there is nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.